Said he couldn't. Seven o'clock on October 26th, I called to order the planning commission special meeting. The meeting was called as a replacement to the meeting that we could not hold last week on October 20th. In front of every each of you, you have the packet. The first item on the, hey, Mark, we just, we just started. Before we begin on the agenda, let's call roll.
Broker here.
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 He's excuse. Here. There we go. We have a forum. In front of you is the packet. You have the agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The agenda is approved. Also in your packet is the minutes from our regular meeting dated October 18th, 2022. Has anyone had, has everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes?
Soon they were same minutes that we received last week.
Same ones as we received last week.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 18th, 2022.
Second.
Second. Moved by Gardner, approved, seconded by Bobby. All those in favor saying, second by the aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next item is public comment. On the agenda items only, if there is individuals, looks like we have a few people who are online. We have no one in the actual room. If anyone would like to speak, just raise your hand and keep your comments to three minutes and at this point only on the agenda items. Seeing no hands, then we will move on. Next item on the agenda was old business, which we had none to to carry over discuss. Which leaves us with new business. The first item in the new business is the election of a chair as well as officers for the planning commission due to the opening that we had had from our recent vacancy.
I will make a motion to nominate Steve Mans as Chair of the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made by Gardner, seconded by Bobby. And I accept that. Motion. This, we would actually do a roll call, correct?
Yes.
Is there any debate? Then Sarah, will you call roll?
Sure. Broker?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Shay?
Yes.
Yes.
Next, we would.
Congratulations. Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could, and congratulations to you. I did, we did place it on the agenda toward the, there was election of the chair slash officers. So if you wish to go through a process tonight of selecting a vice chair, you can, or if you, if there's a desire to wait to the next meeting, that's fine too.
No, I think it's, I'd like to go ahead and put the vice chair in place. And with that, if I could, I'll make a motion that we nominate Anne Broker as vice chair.
Second.
Second.
Any comments on that? And your one, do you accept?
I would accept, assuming you're the both.
Right.
Presocious.
Seeing no comments, let's take it to the vote. Sarah, would you do roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. And then your first time will be next November meeting because I won't be here.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, my gosh. Now you tell her.
I waited to get elected first. That's why it was like, what do you like now or next meeting? I'm like, let's do it now. Let's remove that one also. All right. Next item on the agenda was discussion of 2023 priorities. We could have left this as an open item, I think, because we wanted to try to really look at what we have been addressing in 2022. But then also items that we might want to consider for 2023. We really didn't put in specific. Discussion items, but I can at least open up with some of the ones that I know that have been discussed amongst. Myself as well as residents, and I think I've heard, you know, from several others, just on one-on-one type of calls. One of the ones that we may want to at least be open to a discussion on would be short-term rentals. The update on the master plan, which probably I'd like to have your input on where we stand and what we think on that waterfront development. Park Street with sidewalks and widening. Zoning, whether or not we needed to streamline or make recommendations for streamlining the number of zones that we have. And if there's any ordinance changes, and specific was when I was looking at that whole Spear Street. Situation that we had at the last meeting as to where the ordinance currently costs for that point three. Based on the square footage of a property, or should that just be on a footprint? I mean, these are the type of things I think that we could use as examples as to if we wanted to address changes. But these are all, these items that I know have been raised, you know, in front of, or at least with me. And other items, other people wanted to kind of throw out that we would consider and whether we can get to, you know, each topic in tonight's meeting. But maybe we can just discuss them or prioritize.
Yeah, Chairman Mans, I would like to. We had last summer slash fall, we had put together a. List of four goals and just to maybe bring that back up. We actually have a spreadsheet that we were using to kind of track these items and some of which have already been mentioned. Number goal, number one was improved. There's an echo in here. So anyway, if I'm talking too loud, let me know. Continued improvement of zoning code was one goal. Underneath that included annual code cleanup, housekeeping, commercial districts to eliminate inconsistencies. Portion of code got dropped. Common offenses, marinas and waterfront construction development, which you've mentioned. Code is inconsistent with, I'm just reading from the notes that we captured before. Code is inconsistent with rest of code. Does the code say what we want it to say? Question mark parcels in two zone districts. How should code be written to accommodate parcels which are in two zones? Review vacating streets slash alleys, policy into ordinance, expand our four district. Evaluate whether all the zone districts that we have are needed. That was mentioned by, by you previously. Ex parte contact policy, we were talking about. When going to visit properties that are in front of us before the meeting, you know, what's the policy in terms of, and it's, it's referred to as ex parte. Short-term rentals, which you mentioned, Park Street. Then the second goal was master plan development, 2026 review. We had discussed regarding scheduling the consultant to start the master plan review process with planning commission by end of quarter one, 2022, which obviously we're past that. Meet with Douglas and Township to discuss master plan process by end of quarter three, 2022. Interview and recommend consultant to respective municipalities end of Q4, 2022. Goal three was ensure increased citizen participation in the planning process. And one idea that we had was to create signage that would be placed at properties that are going to be coming up for discussion and public hearings. To visually tell the community that there's a property that may be in their neighborhood. I know there's a 300-foot notification process in the ordinance, but this would be a more visual. Sign put, you know, we, we didn't decide where, where it would actually be placed or the size or everything. But we found examples of these, these and other communities that would be helpful to just kind of visually communicate with people when these come up for discussion. We also discussed a possible doing a community survey about how to increase their participation in the process. And goal number four was planning commissioner and others' education and training opportunities. Assistant citizen master planner, of which myself and Bobby. And Richard all attended, Rich Crawford, who's now in ZBA, as well as the planning commission binder, which we have courtesy of our previous zoning administrator, put that together and staff. So this has been a wonderful addition. So those were all we had tracked before, so.
And actually, it's Ryan attached to the agenda. Basically a summary, I think, of what you just started.
Okay.
He had more of the detail. Great. That's what I was looking at. I thought I had that.
Okay. Oh, wonderfully. Sorry, I didn't even read that yet. So.
No.
Obviously someone's ahead of me, picked that right up from what we've done previously. Great. Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate that.
Russ, I heard you mention Park Street and waterfront development, which I know Steve mentioned as well. Was that another one?
Yes.
Zoning. Yeah.
Yeah.
And again, I think, you know, on some of these. You know, as a planning commission, these are not items that are really coming before us. But I believe when we were talking about 2022 and going to 2023, and it kind of relates into the planning process. If we, from a community standpoint, I think people look to us and are wondering, you know, what are we doing as far as planning for the community? And right now, what we typically are doing is just when items come before us, we're looking at it, whether it's a site review or vote. And like the Park Street, I know it was, it's been written about. I know some of the people on council have gone. Obviously, the planning commission is not going to be making any type of decisions or recommendations as to what we would do. But I would think that would be one of the items that if we were going to hold any type of a. Public session, you know, whether it be a public hearing or we're going to do surveys, that would potentially be an item that would be on. You know, something like that, just probably like any of the items that are really here, like the short-term rentals or the water street development. It's more of, do we think these are items that we would want to, you know, take to the community as part of the planning commission? Trying to get a feel for what the community is looking for us to be doing in 2023 and moving forward. Now, part of these, I do think kind of relates to, if we want to try to go in the order that they were laid out or. One of the things that I was thinking is a lot of the stuff that we would possibly be discussing could be part of the master plan. And so I was thinking, maybe it might be good to kind of start with where we are in the master plan and see if we're all in agreement as to what we believe we should be doing. Given that the last master plan was created and finished in 2016. As we know from some of the classes and stuff we've done too, typically there is a review at at least a five-year period. And then a many times kind of a complete revision, if it is warranted, at at least a 10-year time period. Due to COVID and that, you know, we really didn't have a complete type of review of the plan in 2021. And if we were looking at in today's market, you know, if we were saying it was going to be a 10-year, then it would be 2026 would be when we would look to have a revision. So it becomes a question of, you know, do you want some of these items to kind of wait until it's closer to that time period? Or would you want to bring them up as part of the review that we'd be doing, you know, for the five-year, which is now be a kind of a six, six-year part of review? Bobby, what are you?
I think if, for those of you who were here for the couple of meetings where we talked about this in some detail. We essentially, I think, agreed that we would, our objective would be to complete. The review slash revisions of the tri-community plan by 2026, so the 10-year. But because there was nothing done at the five-year time period and because there are issues. Involved in the tri-community plan that relates specifically to Sagatuck, perhaps more than the other two communities. That, which will require a lot of public comment and discussion and input. That we would like to get started sooner rather than later because I was involved in the 2003, 2004 tri-community plan development and took a long time. And if, because it's not only what we need to do with our own citizenry. But it also is working with the city of the village of Douglas. And the township. So lots of moving parts to it. And I think based on what we learned in our master planner classes, as well as a lot of the conversation that's taken place here. In fact, I was reminded of the city council meeting on Monday night and talking about. Park Street because there was quite a discussion on Park Street on Monday night. So I think that we need to get started sooner rather than later. And we also though, as a planning commission, and is the planning commission that leads the development of that plan. As a planning commission, we need to be very clear at the end of the day in terms of what our expectations are relative to what. We expect from the tri-community plan. The struggle usually is, at least in my experience in the past, is between sort of the long-term strategic kind of thinking and vision and what everyone wants to get done right now. And then there's the, the coordination among all of the jurisdictions. So I, I mean. There have been several interruptions in terms of, from our first discussion earlier of the year to today. But I, my impression is. I believe the township is undertaking a massive ordinance review. And I believe their objective is to have that finished with then. I think originally we were hoping by the end of the year, I think now it's probably the first quarter. But then their plan is to get started on the development of the tri-community plan. In Douglas, I am unsure based on just the state affairs there relative to the turnover of their. Zoning administrator. I wasn't sure what his title was, but the zoning administrator there and. But I would like, I mean, what I would recommend for us if, and it depends on the cooperation of the other two. That we have a plan laid out by the beginning of the year in terms of what's going to happen between now and our end date of 2026.
Didn't get from Ryan, Bobby, earlier in the year said that she would kind of spearhead the master plan. So thank you for, for that. Have you had an opportunity to speak with anyone in Douglas?
I have not had any opportunity to speak with anyone in Douglas, except sort of from a distance. And it's been a conversation that's involved other subjects too. So I don't consider myself to have had any kind of substance of conversation. I have spoken with the township, so. And the plan is to have, to retain a consultant.
Okay. Yeah, then one of the goals that I'd like to do would be for, you know, the next meeting, which may be gone, but is on the AM, the December meeting. Would be as chair, I want to reach out to the planning commission chair for Douglas and Sagatuck Township, just to let them know that I was selected as the new chair here. Like to say hello to them, maybe meet them for a coffee and then just kind of share items that we're talking about here this evening. With them and see if they're kind of in favor of it, at least get an update. You know, is the master plan something that's on their agendas yet for 2023 planning? Or are they thinking that they're going to try to address it more in the 24, 25, which some of the items, I think we do need to get ahead of.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I think that approach, it sounds like a good one. And I did follow up with the former zoning administrator just to kind of get up the speed a little bit on, on where the staff discussions were with other municipalities. And discussing a tri-community plan update. And my understanding in talking with Ms. Osman is that the township still has a desire to work jointly on an update to the tri-community plan. But she wasn't as sure that, that Douglas was wanting to go that direction, that they may choose to kind of do their own master plan. So a conversation with the city of Village of Douglas to kind of find out whatever direction they, they desire to go. So that way, the other two communities could then make a decision from there and then start setting some timelines on, on, on moving that work forward certainly.
What I would suggest is that I like the, having the roadmap ready by that first meeting in January. And then maybe seeing a preliminary roadmap. I, I call it a roadmap, but a plan of action, whatever you want to call it. That kind of gives us a very clear timeline in terms of what needs to take place, when, which is kind of where we were before.
Right.
And see that roadmap at the November meeting, at least a draft of it. And then in December, see the actual and say, okay, this is what we're going to be moving on, starting in January would, would, would be my recommendation.
So point of clarification, when you say roadmap, you're just kind of looking for a rough timeline and like, you know, even.
Yeah.
You know, working together with other municipalities potentially to either, you know, do request for proposals on a consultant. Because some of the nitty gritty details as far as, you know, when you do your notice of intent to plan. And then actually, you know, setting out what your, your public engagement process looks like, those things would kind of probably worked out with, with a consultant and flushing out more of that. Nitty gritty detail and a, and a firmer timeline, but if you want more of a rough.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Possible.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of a very fairly high level one to begin with, just at least here are the major milestones that we have to be concerned about.
Cause I would think trying to set up a goal of when we want to start to have a conversation with a consultant, knowing that they can kind of help guide us. You know, since I wasn't here for the 2016, Bobby, you were involved. I don't know, did they start that in, you know, 2012 or 2013? Did they start it in 2014? Cause I, we want to bring the consultant in, but we also want to try to make certain that we're not doing something so far in advance. That we run the risk that potentially changes by the 2026 also.
You're exactly right. And, you know, and I. What that timeline looks like, you know, I don't know that a consultant, and I could be wrong. Give you a, I, I worked on a couple of different master plans in the community I live in and with some other hats on. And typically we focus on kind of a, a year type timeframe and from beginning to at least getting a good draft plan to then have some further discussion on. But, you know, it would be up to the consultant, I'm sure too, you know, what, what does that timeline look like? How much time do we need? How many meetings do we need? All fair questions.
So the priorities, just to be clear. Is that it's somewhere between, we need agreement among the jurisdictions in terms of if we are going to work together.
Yep.
Cause can't be a tri-community plan if they're not. And, and if there's not going to be a tri-community plan, then I think that we have to be intentional. I'm not saying it's a bad idea to do a two-community plan. But I'm just saying that I think we have to be intentional in terms of that decision relative to the fact that we really are a tri-community. So I, I think we have to. And I'm not, I mean, I'm open to ideas. I don't have. But if Douglas is actually considering going on their own. I think there needs to be some kind of clear understanding among the jurisdictions. Of, you know, the pros and the cons of that. And those decisions, I don't think respectfully should be made in isolation.
I agree. And I have heard just hearsay, you know, with Douglas considering having their own because they, they have more developed potential. In their town currently, and then of course, that's more the near term than what Sagatuck does, you know, with the entire Hayward property, with the one that's on Center Street. Some of the additional, you know, issues that I'm hearing about, you know, Douglas even wanting to have more like even their own PR and. Their visitors bureau, you know, and sometimes you'll hear that they feel like Sagatuck gets all the focus as opposed to being just a tribe. But I do think we have to reach out and find out, you know, what, what their plans are. And if they are still planning to do it as a tri-community, then it can be a matter of each one. Are they at that point to where they're willing to appoint somebody to kind of represent their, you know, planning, you know, commission as kind of a head of that?
I think that maybe there needs to be a clear understanding what a tri-community plan does and doesn't do. Because, I mean, even though we agree on the big plan, then it's up to each of us to.
And that's true too.
Yeah.
Because it's really kind of setting up, what do you expect? What are the expectations and kind of the overall goals and thoughts for the tri-community? But you're not setting any type of specific ordinances or. Binding, you know, agreements.
Right.
You know, for, for anyone, but it does give you that reference point to be able to kind of go back and say, what was laid out here in the master plan itself.
Right.
Yeah.
Can I ask a couple of questions? Being a newbie. Super basic, the only master plan Sagatuck has is the tri-community plan. Is that correct? We do not have our separate, we've never, have we ever had a separate master plan?
In recent times, probably not.
Okay. So, so the, and the first tri-community plan was the one in, in 2016?
No. 2003, 2004.
2003, 2004. So that was the, the one that is the current one was the second one. And has it always been designed to be? The master plan, I, I, let me ask the question another way. So from what I understand, you're saying neither the township or Douglas currently have an individual master plan either.
No.
Okay. So everybody's relying on the tri-community master plan as their community's master plan.
To develop their own strategies.
Got it. Okay. I, I know those are really basic, but I.
No.
I, for the very first time a little while ago, flipped to the master plan and was kind of surprised it didn't say Sagatuck on it. It said tri-community. I'm aware of the tri-community plan in part because of, of the, of, of your organization. Which should, which reminds us of it often, but the Coastal Alliance, but okay, I'm sorry for those basic questions, but I, I just wanted to make sure.
It's a good question.
Yeah. And in the very first page, one dash one of the tri-community master plan gives you the history of that. How the tri-communities arrived at this, at this point in time. I hope this continues to be the master plan for the tri-communities because then it goes down to say the goal of this. It's worth reading it again. It is the long-term goal of this joint ma, joint master plan. To improve the quality of life for all citizens in the tri-communities through implementation of policies and best practices that preserve the existing small town slash rural character of the area. And that achieves sustainable development, that is, which meets, which meet the needs of the present generation without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their needs. My position on that has always been as goes the township, so goes Sagatuck. As goes Sagatuck, so goes Douglas.
And vice versa.
Exactly. And, and so any opportunity we have, Chairman Mans, to, you know, connect with the other leadership in the township and Doug, and, and, and the city of Douglas. I think just indicates our, from my personal perspective, a continued support of the tri-community approach. To have an individual master plan for just Sagatuck that doesn't reflect the needs of the communities around us, I think is short sighted.
Um, I'll, I'll say something. I, I will, between now and our next meeting, I will look at the tri-community plan in greater, much greater, I'll read it. Obviously, I didn't even read the first paragraph, did I? Um, but I am concerned and it's kind of like what you alluded to, Mr. Chair, about the concerns of Douglas. That the issues of Sagatuck are not necessarily the issues of the township or Douglas. We have peculiar issues, peculiar development issues. And so I wonder if. An individual city master plan with an overlay or a separate tri-community plan. Addressing separate but different issues might be something to consider. But I am, I readily admit I'm speaking out of somewhat of ignorance because I've not read the tri-community master plan. And maybe it covers everything I just said. So, but I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, it, it's very unusual. I was on a planning commission of a suburb in, in Detroit. And I don't know of any other place that has multiple communities, municipalities that do a joint master plan for that very reason that each city is individual. But so, but I'm, I'm going to become a lot more educated by the next meeting.
Yeah. And, and I think the overarching goal here, that's, that's a great comment. The overarching goal here is that whenever, because each individual community has its own zoning code. That drives the individual development and growth and planning within each of the tri-communities. So those are separate from each other. However, in reviewing your zoning code, in my perspective, you should be looking at what was contained in the tri-community to kind of guide your decisions. That's the purpose of this. This doesn't necessarily control what you do, but it provides a guiding, some guiding principles to be looking at. So we still, I still feel individually, our zoning code should reflect the individual needs of our community in conjunction with what's laid out here. in conjunction with what's laid out here. That's, that's, that's how I've always looked at it.
And there will be very specific issues related to Sagatuck, just like there will be some that will relate to Douglas. But how does it fit into the overall master, you know, plan as to what we envision the community and where we want the community to kind of go, you know, moving forward?
And I think too, part of your questions or comments, Mark, I think that, I know that the city has started a very deliberate strategic planning process in terms of Sagatuck. I'm not exactly sure where the township or the city of the village of Douglas stands on that. But just from sort of a planning point of view, or my corporate background planning point of view, is that each of the jurisdictions should certainly have a strategy a long-term and obviously short-term that supports the overall tri-community plan, not only in terms of the ordinances are huge in terms of driving that, but in terms of other issues too that have come up over the years. So I think that I I see the tri-community plan as sort of the guide for that. And then each of the jurisdictions develop their strategy that's consistent with that. I've learned a lot through my experience with the Coastal Alliance, for instance, in terms of how one jurisdiction, because it all blends together, right? No one rides down the river in a boat, says, oh, we're leaving Sagatuck now and we're entering the township. And.
Well, heck, just driving to Oval Beach, you you almost passed through all three.
Exactly, exactly. And so if one does something, it might, you know, I'm not saying that it's intentional, it's just unintentional consequences if you aren't thinking about that. So that's why I think it's important to have this big picture point of view. And then strategically and operationally, then do what's best within that context for your city. The other thing I learned from the master planner class, which is really, I really didn't want to do that because it just took so much time. And it's evenings, three hours, oh my God, I'm so happy I did at the end. Because it it struck me that, you know, we all live in our own little space here, and it's very seldom that we get some sort of the opportunity to step back and look at the bigger picture. And in terms of where cities like Sagatuck, the size of Sagatuck or Douglas or the township are heading, and what the needs are going to be, not in so distant future, maybe the next five to 10 years, but what we need to start doing now to, you know, plan for that and to 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 ensure that we remain healthy and robust. And at the same time, you know, respect and maintain our essential character that makes this place so special. And I'm just not talking about the city of Sagatuck. I'm also talking about Douglas and township. Because most people who come here, they don't really think they're in Douglas or it's just Sagatuck. I'm sorry about that, everybody.
Yeah, talk to the business owners and Douglas about whether they think that people know where they are.
And then another thing, hopefully, everyone will kind of look at the tri-community as the way to go. But even our schools, our school system is integrated with the Douglas and Sagatuck, the libraries.
Fire district.
You know, the fire districts, there's a multiple things that we have as part of our overall community. That is a true, true tri-community, you know, as to how they service it. So I think we can also kind of use that if, I don't, I'm not saying there is any pushback because right now we haven't had a chance to really discuss. But I do want to have that conversation.
I think that's the perfect start to kind of give us some clarity and then we can kind of move to.
And I do want us to be thinking, I'm sorry, I do want us to be thinking too about the consultant. Because I, I mean, I don't want that to be a five-minute process. I think, you know, whoever we choose, we're going to live with for a while.
That's absolutely true.
Whoever we choose, I'm sorry.
In terms of the consultant, yeah, we're going to live with them, so.
And then if we, if each community is going to participate, trying to get a buy-in from them, you know, as to sharing and any consultant cost. As, because I know that the council has, well, at least was in the budget, I can't.
Yeah, the 25,000, I think.
That we would have, you know, potential towards a consultant. Yeah, and that, so it's just going to would look at the cost of it, but then also the timeline, you know, that we're all in the same agreement. And if it turns out that they, like last time where things happened more in that one to two years prior to the master plan being updated, then we still can go back as part of 2023 and ask, do we want to start now? Because there are things that are kind of before us that we, you know, the list we was kind of discussing in having our own at least community input towards, you know, some of the items. That also could help us even when we do get to the master plan, because we already now have kind of an idea as to whether the community is in favor of, you know, the plan, any changes regarding, you know, whether it's water street development or short-term rentals or Park Street. You know, should that all be part of, part of the plan and part of the public hearings that even relate to that as as a tri-community?
One of those lines, one thought that I had is, as we were talking about the tri-community plan, was our consultant did talk about experience with that. I know we had a, he gave us a presentation earlier this year. So I wonder if, even if I I I assume it kind of, the way the selection process works for a consultant is that everyone kind of comes to an agreement, but but maybe even kind of in the lead-up, maybe he can assist with some of those big picture thoughts. If we have the budget, I don't know.
Yeah, and and good discussion. I think we have some good next steps to kind of take it from here. I, as far as a consultant selection process, you know, once we know which direction we're heading, you know, we can, as staff, as well as with planning commissions, work through logistics as far as, okay, what is the cost sharing going to be on a consultant? And then develop collectively a request for proposals, collect those proposals from firms that are interested. And then typically there's some sort of small group that would interview the firms and and kind of select one that fits best for the group. And then, once that that firm is selected, then some of those timelines and things like that would be kind of firmed up. So, but I think great first step.
Get that taken. Now, so then stepping aside from the master plan, are there topics that we have kind of discussed that we would like to put put on at least for consideration in 2023? That we would actually be proactive in taking to the community and giving community input? I personally, you know, as a member of the planning committee, but also as a citizen of Sagatuck, would like to have the community engage in a conversation about short-term rentals. I know it's been an item that is currently in front of legislate legislation. We're talking about having somebody come in and give us kind of an update. But during the election process, and Russ, I know you've made comments on it. You know, it seems to be a question that comes up from a lot of constituents. And so I continue to hear from, you know, from individuals saying, well, what is the planning commission doing, you know, to bring this to the attention of council? And so that would be like an item, you know, would we want to proceed? Would we want to proceed with, you know, some type of, you know, public hearings, you know, in regards to it? It's a, it's a hot topic. There's a lot of different ways that communities are looking to go. You know, it's not going to be something that you're going to have a public, you know, public hearing, not public hearing, but a public comment session in, you know, January and have a decision, you know, on on something in February. It, you know, this has been taking years in a lot of communities. It does kind of end up evolving into the master plan. But that becomes one of those topics that it could still stand on its own as we're looking at 2023.
Mr. Chair, I agree with you. It it should stand on its own. I I attended both the Sagatuck City candidate forum, as well as the Douglas candidate forum. And both were, citizens were very energized around the issue of short-term rentals. And personally, people talk to me about it all the time, so.
Probably the number one thing that I get.
Right.
Off in the field.
I don't think it's anything that can wait on the tri-community plan.
I would, I would agree with you there.
Yeah, I would, one thing I would mention is Mr. Cummings is working with MML to try to get them to do a presentation to the council. I recommend at Monday night's council meeting at the planning commission be invited to that as well, to be included in that presentation.
Yeah, and actually, you know, it's solely up to you and how you prefer to do it. I I've talked with them, MML, and they're willing to do a presentation to council and a presentation to the planning commission separately. But if you prefer to, you know.
You let us know what your preference is. What's that? You say, is it taking place on?
This time in November, right?
November 9th, council workshop is what we're aiming for, for, for them. But MML has told me they are available at your next meeting on the 17th of November to provide a direct presentation to you. It won't be real long, something brief, but. So if you're good with that, gonna have to, it'd be the same presentation probably, but.
I personally see some value in having the planning commission be with the council for the presentation.
I agree, sir. That's why my suggestion would be for us to attend the November 9th session you're talking about.
Okay, yep, we'll just have to work through the logistics of noticing that the planning commission also will have a quorum there and and may, you know.
That's a good point. I hadn't thought about that. Just thinking about. Yeah.
Unless we attended it via Zoom, but then we're just listening, but.
Wait a minute, why, why would we need a quorum, quorum for?
Well, we can't meet together as a group without it being a.
Being noticed.
If it's a workshop, if it's a workshop.
Whenever we have.
Invited to the city council's workshop? Yeah, if you're. Is it any different than if we're sitting in the audience at a city council meeting and we all happen to show up? I I I'm just.
That's a fair question. I think if you're getting together though on something that you plan on having a policy discussion about, and there's a quorum of you present that may be discussing it, that that gets into, you're probably going to want to notice that properly as a potential open meeting, yeah.
Okay, is this just a presentation by, I'm I'm sorry, is this just a presentation by MML giving us a status update on on everything all related to short-term rental, or is there actually something going to be happening by the city council or prospective, potentially by the planning commission that night?
Correct. So the the Michigan Municipal League has been asked to come and speak specifically to the the bill that's pending on the state.
Okay.
Legislature. So they're going to kind of talk about what's in that bill. What concerns MML has had with that bill and the work that they've been doing to kind of make some changes to it and let you know the status of it.
And I'm sorry, I don't care if we duly notice and hold a meeting, have a quorum.
Yeah, we were able to do it via. Yeah. Zoom. Yeah, we wouldn't have to have a public notice. We would just be attendees, you know, listening in. And then you could still have a shorter presentation the following week on the November 17th agenda with just the planning commission. But you would have the ability, each of us would have the ability of at least hearing what they had discussed at the city council.
Yeah, I think, and I don't mean to interrupt, I think our city manager is kind of shaking his head a little bit.
Hey, hi, I'm here. Yeah, Ryan Heitz, city manager. So if you do have a quorum of the planning commission, it would be very, very wise. Actually, with short-term rental conversations and presentations to advertise a meeting, if you would like to meet with the city council at the same time, advertise that as such, it's really easy. We'll just advertise or put out a notification that the city council is meeting with the planning commission at the same time. That's all it takes. And I don't think there's going to be any decisions that are going to be made. But trust me, this issue is very litigious and 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 an abundance, an abundance of caution, you should do that. And I think although I'm not an attorney, I think he would agree.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. Yeah, thanks, Ryan. I would say this is just an opportunity for both of the commission and the elected council to hear what's going on. That's, that's it. Information gathering, there's no action taken, there's no policy discussions, it's just listening.
So we all come on the 9th?
I'm saying, I I think we're driving towards that and just coming on the 9th.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to me.
And I'm sure the, sorry, just to jump in, Mr. Chair, if that's okay. Mr. Mans, congratulations on your chairman role. Yeah, again, it's really easy to advertise the the joint meeting. And I think it's gonna save a lot of work on the backend if you do that. So not a big deal. It's, it, it is just a discussion. But I would highly recommend that you advertise it as a joint meeting, very easy to do. And then everyone, and then you can jump in on the conversation if you advertise it as a joint meeting.
That's true.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it.
And that meeting is four o'clock on the 9th.
Excuse me. I would just echo Commissioner Gaunt's comments about, the forums are are great because they offer kind of a quick pulse on where the community is on issues. Waterfront development and short-term rentals were heard clearly, at least from a planning standpoint. And what I also clearly heard and which communicated back to council was that the expectation is that the planning commission should be the driver at this point. And just looking back at some of our master planning materials, one of the key things that we do is we conduct hearings and recommend zoning amendments. And that's the path that I think we should take on this is get some feedback from the community first, kind of see where folks are, and it's going to be all over the board. But then take a look at the zoning code as it exists today and where it needs to be updated and taking it towards where the community thinks it should go. I mean, that's our job. And then recommend those zoning amendments if there's any back to council for them to actually legislatively take action or give us feedback. And I would like to say personally that we should keep this to a very fairly short time period, whether it's 90 days or 120 days. Let's keep this puppy moving once we get started. Because otherwise, I don't, it's a real good time of the year for this kind of stuff because everybody's more available. There's not a lot of folks going, you know, there's not, there's a little bit less going on maybe. And also too, it can get you into the season next year with maybe some changes, depending on which direction this goes.
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chair, one, one thing I I would caution a little bit is from the staff perspective is that, you know, if there's a bill moving through the legislature, that, you know, the legislature returns after the election, you know, something could pass. I'm not sure where the governor stands on it, but that that could impact, you know, decisions that that, you know, that you make. So there may be some value to kind of seeing how the rest of at least this calendar year goes with that bill. The other piece I, we have to do probably a little bit of research on is typically, if you're going to conduct some, some public hearings related to potential zoning amendments, you have to have kind of some text already kind of prepared and and kind of do a public notice, you know, indicating what your proposed text amendments are, and then let folks do a public hearing on that. And so that would take a little bit of work to kind of work through which direction you think you're heading, and then you get that public feedback to revise it and and then kind of go from there. If the desire is for more of like a general, this public hearing on short-term rentals in general, I, that's something that we'd have to, you know, do a little more research on whether we have the ability to do like an official public hearing on that. Certainly you can have an agenda item, a work session item, and folks can come and and talk and speak during public comment. And that's, that's not an issue at all. But if there's a particular public hearing that you want to have an actual record of 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 comments under that, that purview, you'd have to do a little more, more research to see if it's to have some language more refined.
Yeah, that's a good point. Choose my words carefully here. What I was envisioning was a couple of sessions to hear from people.
I was supposed to a public forum.
Yeah, not a hearing on, because we're not.
I think that's, I might have said hearing earlier. I think we would have to actually have something that we are putting forth, you know, to them for them to comment on. Yeah, we're so like a public forum. I could kind of go hand in hand like as the planning commission on behalf of the city of Sagatuck, can we conduct, you know, like a survey? You know, asking, like, you know, you were saying, you know, here are some of the topic items. Would they like to see the planning commission address these, you know, through public forums in 2023? Yeah, but then who's going to kind of create the survey, send it out and, you know, gather the comments? Is it done just just through social media or through some type of a mail campaign like we've done regarding the the library building or the school, you know, millage?
Yeah, so I would, and I completely agree that there's a two-prong here, listening sessions is what I would call them maybe, or town halls, or I don't know what exactly we'll call them, but they're not hearings. And then two is for folks that can't attend or maybe want to write down some of their thoughts, a survey like, you know, Survey Monkey, there's many tools out there that can be used pretty easily to get those, get that out there. So I would see that being the two prongs.
Yeah, Ryan. Mr. Mr. Chair, I'm still here. So we, we already know our citizen survey that we did last year that short-term rentals is a key focus for the city of Sagatuck. And trust me, when you start reviewing some of the ordinances that you're going to put in place, if you decide to do so for short-term rentals, you will have public comment periods for, for, with that. And you will have all those. for, for, with that, um, and you will have, um, all those seats filled up, uh, for and against. Um, so that process will just, that will just happen organically through, um, the system that already exists.
And, and I wonder, I, I, I'm the new one at the table. Do we have the authority as a planning commission to just call a forum? We have the authority to call public hearings. Um, such hearings will be in the public interest regardless of whether they're under our, our other requirements. Um, again, maybe it should be the city council that is doing a public forum or in conjunction with us. Um, I, I, you know, I.
I think the caution from, at least I'm hearing from Ryan, and, and I, I would agree with, you know, is that, you know, if you have a general forum, you're gonna get a lot of feedback on, on either side, and I'm not saying that there's not value to that. Um, but I think you, you seem to have a good sense of some of the concerns that are out there as well as some of the, you know, some of the pros and cons on, on both sides of it. So as you start to then, as your planning commission, start your discussions on whatever direction you want to go, you'll start to elicit that feedback and guidance from the public to then inform your decision as you're going along. Um, yeah, that, that, that would be my concern about just the general form that we may not get, we're just gonna, you're gonna hear from both sides. Is that gonna inform you? Do you need that to get started? Or do you kind of have an idea where you're at? You get started, then you take that feedback as you go. That's, you know, so.
That is a cow, a cart and horse kind of question is, is and, and I'm not trying to, which one you put in front, so.
I wondered too, one thing as we're having this discussion that comes to mind is again, going back to our consultant's presentation earlier this year, because he had, I thought fabulous ideas for ways to engage the public to get their, you know, their views when it came to feeding into the master plan. So I'm just wondering, maybe, maybe this can all be kind of rolled in together. I don't know if there's a way to have some of these meetings that are also kind of feeding into the master plan and for that purpose.
I think this would definitely feed into the master plan.
It absolutely will feed into the master plan. It just becomes a question, you know, if we, master plan work, majority of it will be twenty twenty-five and going into twenty twenty-six, and this appears to be something that a lot of communities in Sagatuck is not alone, uh, and these type of discussions from our citizens. You know, it's happening up and down almost any resort part of the country. Um, I spent a lot of time out in the desert cities of Palm Springs, Rancho Mirage, Cathedral City in California. And I can tell you in the last six months, and I've got some copies of articles, five of the six communities have, uh, put new ordinances in place regarding short-term rentals. Um, they have had major fee adjustments because they viewed this as something that if it is going to occur, they need to make certain that it's generated enough revenue that it can have a, a staff person for compliance, or in some of the communities they're hiring an outside organization that is actually handling the licensing, the compliance, the collection of fees. And so they have to set their, you know, it can't be a revenue generating source of, you know, um, you can't generate a profit off of it as a community. But they have looked at it and said, well, this is what it's gonna cost us to hire a third party to administer it. And then they said, you know, they changed their fees so that they can have that level of revenue to be able to hire that outside party. Uh, you know, so I, we're seeing things, you know, from saying that you, you know, restricting it, restricting it to a certain percentage within the community. Some are, are taking it down to restricting it within a neighborhood. Others are talking about limiting the number of time that any number of times a homeowner would be able to rent as opposed to say the number of days that you, you know, so there's a lot of different approaches that communities are trying to take to try to listen to both sides. Well, you know, without, you know, there's one of the communities just enacted it to where there is no short-term rentals. They, they said anything under thirty days is not allowed, period. You know, but that's had a lot of pushback. So there's, there's, there's a number of ways you can kind of go, and that's where, you know, I think with the challenge that I see would be for, if we were gonna, gonna start it, would be for us to kind of determine, well, which approach would we like to see Sagatuck, you know, take, you know, in, in this? And then if you, if we're not doing a public forum, then we almost would have to kind of come up with some suggestions to ordinance changes that would allow for some of these items, and then you would have a public hearing on those ordinance changes.
Mister Chair, if I could just, and again, I think it's gonna be really helpful to listen to the presentation from, uh, Michigan Municipal League. And then I think you should have the, uh, conversation after that.
I agree. And I think one of the things that, uh, Ryan, both are actually both Ryans, I've discussed, is that there's, as part of it, one will get an update, but then we can also be looking at it from like a worst, what I would call like the worst case. Let's, let's say that the bill that's in front of the house that they're hoping will not be the one that's ultimately passed, you still could look at it and say, well, what if, if this is passed? What is allowed in there? And does that still allow us to make changes within our own ordinances? Because from what I've seen, even in the bill, there's still things that the bill puts restrictions that we don't have currently in our ordinances, like, you know, say that thirty percent limit, you know, in, in a neighborhood. So we might not be able to say, okay, we're gonna limit the number of times, but we might be able to say, how many licenses can they have, you know, and.
Yeah, yeah. And I, so I think we got some good direction on this one. One other thing just for you to think about, um, is another potential option and how to work through, you know, short-term rental um, recommendations, you know, a number of years ago, I was a, a part of a, a short-term rental committee in another community. And so we took kind of a subgroup of the, the community, we took planning commissioners, council members, um, realtors, short-term rental owners, neighbors, um, we actually had school, um, uh, folks from the school because they were impacted by, you know, population and, you know, uh, pupil numbers and their funding and sort of, so we, we grabbed a big, huge group of folks to kind of sit down and we spent, you know, many, many, many months um, going through current ordinances and, and, and wrestling with, um, you know, which direction did the community want to go and then made some recommendations all the way back to the planning commission who then started that work of, you know, public hearings and, 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 and some tax amendment, uh, recommendations ultimately to the city council. And so uh, very lengthy process, but that's another option to kind of just think about and, and mull over. Um, so.
Yeah, it's, it is a good option, and also I think it goes back to almost like asking about the tri-community. We, I need to, we need to find out, is Douglas and Sagatuck Township also having these type of discussions? With, if you were putting a committee together that would start to review, would, would they want to have participation in it? Cause I think that probably most of us would agree, I think a lot of citizens are going to agree that if Sagatuck imposes something that's dramatically different than the other two communities, that can be definitely a plus, and there could be positives to it, but it could also be very, a lot of negatives to it, and it could be viewed as being very unfair.
That's where with the kind of, I mean, um, relationship that we have in every respect, it's really hard to act independently without taking into consideration the effect that it has on the other two. If I, I mean, at the Douglas and the Sagatuck candidate forum, I mean, you could have substituted one for the other in terms of what the issues were. They were all the same, just different people.
I, I, I did not attend the Douglas one, but the Sagatuck one, I kind of, I'll be quite candid. Um, I thought the candidates were kind of punting the issue to us instead of grasping at themselves. Um, and I, you know, and I think that punting might have been justified. I mean, I, I'm happy to take it on. But I, I thought it was easy for them to all say, oh yeah, let's, let's, uh, refer to the planning commission for initial consideration. Um, so, uh, but I smiled and said, fine with me, but, uh, um, they, they certainly, none of them that I remember said, oh gosh, no, we'll, we'll, we'll jump on in with both feet. So.
Um, I think ultimately transparency with the tri-communities is very important here in terms of what direction we're moving. Um, I think is incredibly important too is, um, there's quite a few references to short-term rental units in our, in our individual zoning districts. Um, where's the exact ordinance? And then two is I think we would probably want to get this in front of the planning commission sooner rather than later is the actual not just the zoning code, because I couldn't find it in here. And two is the, the actual, um, some of the restrictions, you know, the, the costs and things like that, just so I can familiarize myself with exactly what's.
Okay, yeah, you want some.
And not having to dig through all of this.
Right. So that would be, I think, a good, for me personally, a good starting point.
Place right now.
Right.
Somebody comes to fill out an application. What do they have to do?
Yeah, we can certainly gather that information and provide it and then, yep. And if also we could, I'm sorry.
I, I was gonna say, where in the zoning code is it? I literally can't find it.
So there are some, um.
I know there's some other, the city has actually passed some laws, some ordinances around short-term rentals, but there's nothing here that I see that actually defines what short-term rentals are and.
Yeah, so, yeah, um, under the, uh, I believe it's under the general regu- general regulations. Um, and then each zoning district has, whether it's permitted or
Right.
special use, and it's permitted essentially, um, everywhere, but I'll, I'll, I'll get you the relevant provisions that lay out exactly, because there's certain language as far as like contracts and single contracts. And so, yep, I'll forward that, that information to the planning commission so you can review before your next meeting and future discussions, and, and we'll work on getting that joint meeting, um, uh, for everyone set up, uh, on the ninth.
Good.
Great.
Regarding one of the areas that we had discussed was the number of zones that we have within the city. Is that a topic that we believe that we would want to address? From a committee standpoint of potentially reducing down or leaving it the same or making adjustments?
I, I will tell you, from the very first time I looked at our zoning ordinance, I was appalled at the number of, of districts that we have. Um, appalled, maybe not the right word, surprised at the number of districts that we have.
Appalled, fine.
And, um, so I, for one, would be in favor of looking and seeing if there is rhyme or reason for each of these little districts, and if not, eh, can we do some commonality in terms of consolidating some? And, and I think that just makes it, you talk about transparency, you make it ease for people who want to do something in our community or move in our community. Um, the, the simpler the thing is, the better.
I agree, Mark.
So.
That's my feeling is that I think we could at least address it and then potentially make a recommendation for some consolidation, you know, of the zones. I guess now because kind of a question of how do we proceed as a committee and.
Yeah, so this is another heavy and, and meaty one, and really what I think we've, uh, what I've only been here a couple of months, um, but in working with our consultant who has also been diving into the zoning ordinance a lot more, and we've been it's different, uh, situations have arisen, and we're looking at different definitions that aren't exactly clear, or some things, um, aren't, aren't, aren't meshing with, um, what we need, you know, it's not as clear to administer. Um, one of the pieces is certainly there's a lot of different zoning districts, um, some are similar, some are, you know, obviously unique, and that's exactly what you would expect out of a um, a zoning map, um, and having zoning districts, but his planning or, or consultant's recommendation is that we really kind of probably do, um, like a fuller zoning ordinance audit, which kind of goes along with your, your first goal of kind of improving the zoning ordinance. Um, and so you guys have already kind of started some of that work. Um, but he's kind of envisioning something on a, a really large scale, probably something similar to what Sagatuck Township is doing right now with a full look at what you have. Is everything um, uh, congruent? And then, um, taking a look at that actual zoning map that you have, can we combine some districts? Um, name them appropriately, um, and then kind of clarify, um, some regulations and definitions. Um, and then make sure that the language says that, you know, what we intend or what you intend for it to say based on your master plan that you have in place, because zoning shall be ba- based on a plan, right? So, um, your master plan kind of informs what your zoning ordinance says as you go along. So, so that, that's an option. Again, it's a consultant pro- by a lot led process. Um, I mean, it's, it's a lot of legwork of diving in, and it, it would take quite a while, and it would probably take going through certain sections at a time during certain meetings. I'm looking at it redline, proposed changes until we finally arrive at something at the end where we then also, certainly throughout the process, the community would be able to provide feedback as you, you know, very public transparent process, the proposed changes and what you're looking at. Um, you know, are in your packets, and then eventually you have a, a larger public hearing and, and make a recommendation of the council on those text amendments.
All right. Um, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, I think that, you know, the consultant will definitely be able to give us some guidance, because that's the other thing that I would get, I get somewhat concerned, is that when I was just looking through kind of like the list that I started off with and what's already here. You know, some of these are time-consuming, and we want to make certain that we don't put too much on the twenty twenty-three agenda, saying, I want to address this, this, you know, knowing there's no possible way that we could possibly, you know, do all of that in
Right.
you know, in a time period.
Correct.
Uh, so I think it's, it's kind of prioritizing whether number one, if you're one, two, or three on the, you know, on the zoning or on these public forum type of topics.
Yep.
Cause I know that the, both of the candidates forum, a lot of discussion was on the Water Street Development.
Right.
Which I think could tie into some of the zoning, you know, type of reviews, but I don't know if that's something that stands as a separate type of the topic or, but, you know, I think if, if it was to be addressed, we can look at what we currently have.
Yeah, that certainly could be wrapped into a larger zoning ordinance update. If there's certain changes that you wish to make to your, you know, zoning along the waterfront, it's not matching up with that master plan and where the community believes they're headed, that's certainly options. It would just, would take a while. I, I would think if, if you're looking at a twenty twenty, you know, a, a, updated master plan in twenty twenty-six, you know, um, that's still, I know it's a, a ways away and, and it's gonna take a while to work on, but, you know, your zoning ordinance updates might be first.
Something you do first, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that does seem like it maybe encompasses some of the topics like the waterfront development generally in Park Street.
Mm-hmm. Following with the, some of the zonings, yes.
And, and, um, I completely agree with Chairman Mans's going on this, and I respect for the city staff and their resources, right? Um, there's a lot going on outside of planning, believe it or not. Um, so I would say our goal of continuing improvement of zoning code. I think below that, I would personally, based on our discussion tonight, that we focus on three things. One is marinas and waterfront construction development. We'd already identified that the code's inconsistent with the rest of the code. Does it say what we wanted to say? Two is evaluate whether all the zone districts that we have are needed. We currently have twenty. And I think some of the master planning classes that we did, we saw other communities that had like ten or maybe twelve. So we're clearly a little out of whack with that. And then three is short-term rentals.
What was point one? I'm sorry.
Marinas and waterfront construction development, the planning commission had a conversation last fall that the, you know, it was identified by the previous zoning administrator that the code's inconsistent with the rest, that part of the code's inconsistent with the rest of the code. And does it say what we wanted to say in regards to waterfront development?
Thank you. I just didn't quite understand you. Thank you.
What was the date on that?
Um, I don't have a date on it.
Okay, well, it was your notes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause I couldn't remember if it was handed out by Cindy or not, because I was trying to find, because I had a bunch of stuff in mind, but.
Just in respect of everybody's time and the efforts that the planning commission will have to go through to accomplish this, that seems to me to be the three things we want to look at under continuing improvement of zoning code.
For coming here.
Yeah.
And I think each of those would, you know, tie into our master plan development review, because it will, again, none of these are gonna be short, but it will start to kind of set up what we're gonna be doing with that.
Right.
The citizens' participation, I think, once we get some information from the consultant, you know, we can kind of determine, you know, do we want to set it up as a committee, which I like that idea of bringing in people, you know, having a few relative, people from the community, yeah, as, let them kind of start it, almost like how they did it on the bike trail and some of the other ones that have been a committee-driven, um, as opposed to maybe jumping right into a public forum. Like that, the committee kind of make the decision.
I'm open to that idea.
I think that's actually one that we would want to pursue. And then obviously we're continuing to have, you know, education and training, you know, goals for us.
Okay.
And into the, the suggestion related to like a, a sign outside of a, a property that's subject to a public hearing, I've seen that in other communities. So if that's, I mean,
Yeah.
if that's the direction the planning commission, uh, would like to go, I, I, I think, you know, we can research, um, you know, some sign designs, something simple to
Yeah, we had a.
place on city property at least, or something along those lines outside of.
Or even at the, if it was a site review, like at the actual s- site itself.
Yep.
You know, you'd have like a notice saying, yes, we've sent to everyone who's within three hundred feet, but this is what's, this, this project is gonna be discussed on, you know, this day with this little packet or something.
Yeah, typically they say like this, this property is subject, you know, to an upcoming public hearing, and they would have like the zoning administrators' contact information, so somebody could see it, that goes, something's going on with this particular property, and then they can, it's, it's an extra way to inform the community and engage them with.
Yep. I will send you the presentation that we. Yep, I will send you the presentation that we did back in September of last year, so.
Okay.
I'll email it to you right now.
Sounds good.
Should I send it to you and Sarah or just you or Sarah would you like to be on that as well?
Okay.
The presentation on a sign in addition to 300 feet notice or presentation on something more general?
In addition to that.
Gotcha. Can we get back to the idea of a, a, a committee instead of in addition to?
A public.
Short-term, yeah. Gosh, I don't know, I, I mean. On the one hand, I, I, I worry about who we put on that committee. I, I. You would want some people such as myself who say live in a neighborhood where it's very much impacted. I guess you would also want some people who own short-term rentals. And then you might want some people who have a residence and then also own short-term rentals. I, I. I, I'm, I'm curious how you would configure that committee, I, I guess, and that's the, the, the sticking point I have versus. Just us doing it, I mean, we, we are selected by the, by the city to, to do that, but you know, I'm not looking for. A- a- as you've also said, there's a lot on our plate already or potent- potentially on our plate, but it, it. I don't know, I, I, I'm stuck on punting it to a citizens' committee. That would then come to us, that would then come to the city council. And then keeping in mind your idea of, of moving it forward with a, with some expeditiousness. A, a, just random thought, I mean, I, I don't have any conclusions, just thoughts.
Correct. I think it's whether we're, if we're taking it on, I, I agree, I think we need to kind of make a decision at some point, you know, we're going to try to do it or have a committee. But what Ryan was talking about is that we do need one to make certain you reach out to. From the school systems to the realtors, you know, getting feedback. You know, that I'm sure some of you, just like it's come up in other communities, you know, some of the real, realtor is going to say, oh, it's going to hurt housing prices. But then there's been arguments on the other side that it makes, it makes the neighborhood more attractive because they know that they won't be living in a commercial district with everyone. You know, doing basically short-term rentals and kind of likes living next to a hotel. So there's, there's multiple viewpoints and then so you, you can get into, do you have studies done just for, you know, the impact of these changes? You know, you can, you can drag it out for years, but I think it's.
Right. And, and I worry that a committee might have a, uh, one side or the other. Dominant or, and that could easily be just an individual who would steer that committee. In a direction that they want and. You know, and it.
I think, let's. See what happens next month with the November 9th presentation on the 17th to kind of determine. What the likelihood is of being able to move forward and then we'll kind of incorporate it as a top priority in the review of the ordinance as we're looking at 7023 roadmap.
Okay.
I agree with that and the other thing in support of what Mark is saying, you know. MML is important, but we aren't, this isn't the first time in the world this has been done. And I think that. We have a consultant that we work with now who might be able to advise us in terms of, you know, the pros and cons of these various approaches.
Right.
Uh, so that we, for us. Nothing's ever ideal, but we basically, you know, end up. Designing it for Sagatuck and for the goals that we want to get out of it, that they'll be legitimate, the information at the end of the day, what's important is the information at the end of the day. Came from citizens and is understood and is legitimate and whether they agree with, some agree, some will disagree with parts of it, blah, blah, blah. But nonetheless, the, the process at the end of the day has to be perceived as legitimate. By the stakeholders and by the citizens.
Yeah, and, and I completely agree and I think it's absolutely critical to get the appropriate level of public input to this.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And how that, how that happens can be done a number of different ways, I would immediately point back to MML, but even more importantly, the Michigan Association of Planners. People that we met through the MSU extension course, we should definitely be in contact with them because we are not the first, Sagatuck is you not, is not unique unfortunately in this regard. And other communities, so there's a logical approach that we're taking to this, it's not just starting with what we think are good ideas and then just kind of wandering around. We should have this roadmap, I call it, saying, okay, here's where it's going to start and here's where it's going to end. And here's what we expect the result to look like and you know full well it's going to go like this during that process, but. That citizenry in our community will appreciate that order as well as an understanding where we'll go, of where we're going with this. And we don't have a predisposed notion how this is going to look, but where it's going to start logically and where it's going to end logically, I think is critical. And then Michigan Associated Planners, I think should be able to probably give us some example roadmaps, plans of action that other communities have taken to take this on.
Ryan, one quick question, on the page two of your memo that you have put out in 2023 priorities. The fee in lieu of parking. Quickly kind of give us an update, we want to have something like that included.
Yeah, and I don't want to steal C manager Heiss's thunder if he wants to talk about this personally, but. Something that, that, that he and I discussed, his understanding was that the community a number of years ago. Had a fee in lieu of parking for. Projects that didn't provide their own off-street parking. And so they're not providing off-street parking because, you know, obviously this community certainly is, is built out. That they're basically paying towards parking in other places and the, the cost to maintain those parking spaces publicly or to build additional parking infrastructure. Or to better your public transportation options, you know, the, the interurban, uh, maybe it's increasing. You know, the frequency and those types of things to, to bring folks from, from other areas, so as long as you're tying that fee directly to. You know, parking and, 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 and transportation and, and fitting that knee, you can't just charge a fee to charge a fee, it has to be, you know, commensurate with providing a service. So that's kind of the thought behind it, I, I, I did just a, a little bit of initial research, didn't want to spend a ton of staff time on it without some, you know, clear direction, but. It looked like there was kind of some research done by some prior consultants many years ago and there were some different recommendations as far as what's. How you would come up with that fee and what that fee would look like, so there's been some work that's been done. I don't know if Mr. Heiss has anything that he wishes to add to that.
Hey, I'm still here. Yeah, so the, the project that really surprised me was the, the Butler project when they, they built the, their, their outdoor bar. And I think they had like 200 seats maybe. I'm not quite sure how many seats and so one of the first thoughts was, okay, 200 seats. You know, how many humans is that? We already have parking constraints and so where's their fee in lieu of parking? Or how, how do they contribute to parking? They don't have to apparently. And that's shocking to me. So when I was working in Door County, we had similar, very similar issues. And so we worked very, very strongly on fee in lieu of parking. It's an acronym, we call it Philip. Fee in lieu of parking, Philip. And we worked hard on, alright, so we understand that it's not a lot of land space. So if you can't get your parking, then you pay into a fee which then can accommodate with. Pedestrian traffic, multi-moldo traffic and/or maybe working with the, the urban transit system. And so, uh, finally, the, the city of Sagatuck looked at that maybe a decade or, or two ago. But that never went anywhere, I would highly, highly encourage the planning commission to make this a priority at the moment. Cause I feel like we have some projects that are going to be in front of us with some high density that they too will not have to pay into any parking. Parking is extremely expensive, if you ever, I, I don't know if you've ever had to build your own, uh, infrastructure and/or commercial building, but. There's lots of research on this and so I would just encourage the, the, this, this commission to highly. I would really, really encourage you to look at fee in lieu of parking at this moment, that's all.
Thanks, Ryan, and thank you for the comments too, because I, I, I was around when that was an issue and that is exactly why it was taken off the books was because there was no specified location for that money to go to actually improve the parking situation. So it was considered, I don't remember the exact language there, but that's why, why it was removed and some of you may not understand this metaphor, but I think Sagatuck's like Wrigley Field in Chicago. If you go to Wrigley Field in Chicago, there's a lot of expensive parking around the place, but what, you know what most folks do? They park out at the, the old DeVry Institute off, off, just off of Western Avenue and they take buses into town or buses into Wrigley Field to see the games and then they get bussed back. I mean, the buses are constantly running. In some cases, I think Sagatuck's like Wrigley Field where you have events like Venetian, Fourth of July and other things where people just want to come here and they all just converge on Sagatuck. And the place just gets maxed out, it just gets full, the town gets full. And so how do we, we want to encourage people to continue to come, but we also don't want to constrain our resources and also it becomes a safety issue and just it becomes uncomfortable. So do we look at ourselves as maybe a solution like Wrigley Field has where they have parking lots outside of town, they bring people and kind of what we do with the high school, right? But we more actively promote that and, and I don't know, I'm just, I'm talking out loud here, but that's how I kind of envisioned Sagatuck now, it's a destination, people all want to come here at certain times and we just get overwhelmed.
Yeah, and, yeah, so the interurban system is, I, in my opinion, is an amazing opportunity to perhaps connect with the city village of Douglas where they have more parking over there. And if we, if you all did like a, a fee in lieu of parking. Then we can invest more into do better marketing, do better transit system and yeah, ship people in and then share the resources too, because. You know, we're maxed out with the number of employees, I mean, it, it gets into a whole nother economic development story, but. There's a lot of opportunity there and I think the fact that developers do not have to pay for parking is, it kind of blows my mind that they, they don't have to do that in city of Sagatuck.
I'm aligned with you on that, Ryan.
Great.
Would that be a standalone ordinance? Or would it just be a change to our current ordinances for each of the zones?
It was not a standalone ordinance, if I recall correctly, it was incorporated into this actual zoning code itself.
You're right.
And I, I, I think RC Ri- Ryan Cummins looked into it, but he couldn't find it on the books, but we can, we'll. We'll continue to look into it, I'm pretty sure it was so- something at the time. But we'll, we'll have to do some more research, but I would highly stress this as a priority for the planning commission and into the council. And then you have to create the amount of money. Per parking space, those debates always get fun and interesting, but we can, we can get there pretty quickly.
It was on the books in, for sure, in 2003 and 2004, because that's when we were trying to build the SCA. And there was parking issues and so. I dealt with it then, so I know it was on the books then.
Hey, that's good intel, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, another question I have is, um, are businesses that are currently have a certain footprint? Say the ones that. Added 200 people facility last summer without naming anybody, are they grandfathered in or can we retroactively, can we across the board? Impose a fee in lieu of parking for theoretically every business in town?
Based on my professional experience, you, you cannot retroactively impose a fee, a fee in lieu of parking.
Yeah, you can't do a, a citywide assessment based on say square footage or number of. Uh, number of people who walk past your front door or.
Assessments are different things, like a special assessment, I don't know the answer to that. So that's something we could research if the planning commission wa- wanted, wanted the city staff to do so. So to be clear, Mr. Lusche.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know, I mean, it, it, in some respects, the, the, the horse is out of the barn. By and large, as people were pretty well built up, but then there is going to be new building.
Correct.
So.
Yes.
I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just, I'm, I'm, it's a genuine question about.
How, when you implement it now all of a sudden, the new one has to pay this fee and somebody else last year who had a project for three times the size maybe, didn't pay the fee and I'm.
Bingo, and actually is it a distance honey for future development, if somebody says, wait a minute, just what you said. Again, you're looking at fairness, I, I don't know the legalities of it and I'm not going to single-handedly say that we should impose greater attorney fees on the city. But I think if, I think that's something that somebody should consider.
And, and I think the tension here is that despite our thoughts that the town is built out, it's not built out in certain ways. There's projects that Ryan mentioned that are coming, I, I do want to ask a question about a ZBA, uh, agenda item in November, but. With projects that like the Butler and the one that's down on Water Street, you basically are going to be bringing more people in. And the tension is, you bring more people in, where do you put them, okay, if you build a spot for them to stay and to stay overnight, great, but if they bring four cars. Then all of a sudden what, you know, you've just, you've created more of a problem and that's the tension, how do you, how do you? How do you resolve that?
And even though we can't make it retroactive potentially, you can at least, you know, start, you know, at this point moving forward, you know, at least if we decide to go that route.
And something we have to discuss also is, okay, so you add extra interurban buses and extra drivers based upon the fee. But where are the people parking that the interurban is picking them up from? I mean, are we going to do a multi-story parking deck somewhere? I mean, or a parking lot? I, I mean, it, it, it's a little more diff- a little more involved than, oh gosh, we have a wonderful interurban, we'll just hire, we'll just hire more drivers and have more buses. You know, it, it, the city is a certain size and there's only so much space to park. And when the city, trust me, when that high school parking lot gets full and the urban, you know, I mean, the urban's shuttling people, people find other places to park. So.
Yeah, and I think as Manager Heiss mentioned, there's opportunities outside of the city of Sagatuck specifically, like in the township and in the village of Douglas that actually might have some opportunities for us if we talk with them, they. Cause this is in their interest too to help us solve this problem because it brings more people in, in theory spending more money.
So Douglas is going to agree to a parking lot so that people can be shuttled into Sagatuck?
I, I didn't say parking lot.
Wow, oh, 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 I, I'll, yeah, that's a good use of the Haywood property.
Yeah, I mean, so, Mr. Chair, if I may, I said, I mean, there's mul- multiple solutions and this has been studied. Multiple times, not only in Michigan, but also where I worked in Door County. Where we were able to share resources, again, where I worked in the village of Egg Harbor. We also had a parking problem, which is also kind of just like a walking problem, not really a parking problem, but whatever. But then we were able to work with our neighboring municipalities to shuttle people in for events. And figure out ways to have the businesses that we're constructing to pay into that to be successful. Again, the, the whole point is that parking infrastructure is wildly expensive, we are already limited with our parking constraints and so we need to be creative. There's lots of solutions, it also includes like golf carts, biking. More sidewalks, I mean, it's, it's a whole, it's, it's a thing within itself, so I, I would highly encourage the planning commission to start studying it very quickly.
We will move it on to one of the priority agenda items. Anything else that we would like and respect for everyone's time here this evening?
I did have one question, there's a, an agenda item on the, I think it's November 10th, ZBA meeting for the project down on Water Street. That originally was going to come to the planning commission, it got pulled at the last minute, now it's going to ZBA, so I'm just understanding kind of what the process is here. Are we still going to see this project, is it going to be, how's this all going to, I just want to understand how that works out.
Yep, yep, great question, so they've submitted an application to go to the zoning board of appeals to seek variances and then. I presume if they're granted their variances, then they would bring.
The site plan.
Submit a, a special land use application. A special land use application and site plan review application to then come before the planning commission, but I'm thinking they will, they want to see. Whether or not they're granted their variances, what their plans would have to look like before they bring them here.
So is that a cautious choice? That's the reason they pulled back the first time was to take this route? Do you do we know?
I'm not aware of them seeking the planning commission route first. Since I've been here, I've been working off of. A zoning board of appeals application and I haven't seen any other applications from them. They revised their plans as part of their zoning board of appeals application.
Yeah, just I have a memory. I know Ryan, if Ryan Heiss, if you remember, it it was moving towards being on the planning commission agenda and then it got pulled at the last minute. What I recall. And then all of a sudden it's now showing up at ZBA. So I was just kind of curious as how that process happens.
Yeah, so there's, as far as I know, there's no prescribed process. So they have to go through three, three different groups, right? So they have to go through a planning commission eventually. Or first, ZBA and historic district. It's kind of dealer's choice, right? Like you get to choose. Some people decide to. Go to ZBA first because if they don't get those variants. The the variance that they're seeking passed, then the deal is done or they have to redesign their project. So if they go to planning commission. First, that's that's fine, but then they have to go to ZBA. So and then his historic district also. So I I mean, I guess if I was a developer, I would go to ZBA first to kind of get my infrastructure correct. You know, like with with the setbacks and everything that's involved and the the height variances and the setbacks. And and then I would go to planning commission. And then, well, probably I'd go to historic district to get beat up a little bit and then maybe go to planning commission. So again, we don't have a a prescribed process, dealer's choice. Everyone does it a little differently. But it does ultimately has to go through all all three, so. Don't see it eventually.
If you think about it, when you're looking at a site plan, you can't approve it unless it meets the requirements. So if they've presented a plan to you that didn't meet setback requirements or height requirements, you wouldn't be able to prove it. That's why they're starting where they're starting.
Yeah, I just, just thank you very much for the explanation of the process.
Yep.
By the way, they're asking for significant variances.
I know.
Yep.
That's why I'm curious to what that means.
Yeah, so. I encourage everybody to read it if you haven't read it yet. It's significant variances.
One other thing that I would like to. Ryan C. I don't know if we discussed it the last meeting. I love this report that you put together for the city council meetings where you do this, the planning, zoning and project report. I'd like to ask if that become part of our packet.
Okay.
Each month when we do, when we do meet and that we have it to be able to review, you know, in advance.
Yeah.
Already prepared it.
Yeah, it's a planning mission. Okay, you know, sometimes you may have, you know, a month where you don't meet. I can include all the reports that I've given to council in your packet. That's totally.
Or the most updated one would be fine.
Okay.
You know, I think that, you know, just for myself, when I was kind of flipping through. One, I thought it was very informative because it gave us a listing of everything that is going on and whether it's part of historic, a new home, short term rental. The one that was in here regarding the Spear Street, this is another one of those questions that if something comes before the planning commission, like on that situation. And then they would, they would, they took it, they withdrew their application and now it's been revised to where it's within the point three. And so it moves forward. You know, I would like to have that kind of on the agenda also, that Lisa gives us an update as to why that occurred. You know, can we, given we, I know that had it been within that point three to start with, it wouldn't have come before us. But since it did come before us, I guess it raises my mind the question of how did they revise it to where it no longer is necessary for it to come before us?
Okay, so you're asking for.
I use that as an example of something I pick up from going through the report.
Yeah, and you'll probably see, I probably will include all the reports to council only because there's some things that may. Only be on my desk for a two week period and I, you know, and so you, if you're only getting the most recent one, you may miss out on certain things that were fairly quick or. So this that you're getting, so you will see some repeats, you you know, as you've already seen, some some things linger for multiple weeks for various reasons. Or waiting on meetings or working through issues. So, yeah, certainly we can, if there's a case that's before you. And for whatever reason, they withdraw and the planning commission wishes to have an an update, so that's not a problem.
It also gives us a feel for the scope of everything that's going on.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot.
Exactly.
Which is.
Yeah, we, yeah, none of us have an idea of everything other than you or you have an idea of what's going on outside. Where we drive or where we walk.
Certainly, and. Three lines, sometimes there's more emails or phone calls or meetings than you can imagine on one little box, but. But that's part of it, right? So.
It is.
Fantastic community.
Right, so I think you've got a game plan for prioritizing the improvements to the zoning code for discussion with your master plan. Participation. Is there any other item that is part of new business? Moving on to communications, we didn't have any. Report of officers and committees. I'm not aware of any. Public comments at this point, if there's anyone who would like to make a public comment, limit it to three minutes. I don't see any hands up. We'll move past that. So that I have a motion to adjourn.
They'll move.
Just real quickly, going forward, sorry, Mark. I do not need a printed copy of the meeting materials. I'll be viewing them online going forward so you can. Unless it's an updated document that's not in the agenda packet, so save ourselves a little bit of time.
Mr. Lachey, you want to make that motion again?
Thanks for being here, Mr. Heiss.
Thank you, Ryan.
Have a good night. Good Sarah, great job.